Presented by the League of Women Voters of Winnebago County and Oshkosh Media. I'm Margie Davey, president of the League and tonight's moderator. Joining me on the panel is Karen Schneider, publisher of the award-winning Oshkosh Herald, Nina News, and Winnicott News. This forum is cosponsored by Oshkosh Media. The forum will air live on Oshkosh Media Government TV, which could be found on Spectrum Cable Channel 10 in the city of Oshkosh and Channel 99 on AT&amp;T U-verse. It will also stream live on the Oshkosh Media YouTube channel and the free Oshkosh Media apps on Roku, Amazon Fire TV, and Apple TV. The forum will be available on demand on the Oshkosh Media YouTube channel and will re-air several times on Government TV between now and Election Day. Please check the Oshkosh Media website for replay times. The League of Women Voters seeks to inform citizens about major public policy issues and about candidates seeking office. We never support nor oppose any political party or candidate. The League publishes a monthly newsletter and has an active Facebook page. For more information about the Oshkosh League, about the League of Women Voters of Winnebago County, access our website at lvwwinnebago.org. Please be aware of two important statewide races in the April election so you have time to learn more and make informed decisions about the candidates. The Wisconsin Supreme Court has two candidates running for one open spot, and the incumbent for the Office of State Superintendent of Public Instruction has a challenger. Please check our Facebook page for resources to educate yourself on these offices and the candidates vying for them. We also have informational sheets on the table outside the door of this room. There will also be a referendum question on all Wisconsin ballots. Like the referendum questions presented last year, this again seeks to disenfranchise voters by placing voting limits into the state constitution instead of allowing bipartisan discussions to pass policies. Although Wisconsin's photo ID law is among the most restrictive in the nation, the LWV of Wisconsin urges voters to vote "no" on this question. Public questions were solicited in advance. We asked for them beforehand. Those of you in the audience may also submit questions on the cards provided. Just wave them in the air and a League member will come around and pick them up from you and give them to us. Questions must be for all candidates and may not single out a candidate. Questions may be edited for brevity and clarity, and while we hope to cover as many as we can, we may not have enough time for all. Three candidates are competing for two seats on the Oshkosh Area School Board. They are incumbent Molly Smilnick and challengers Michael Ford and Jacob Wolf. Incumbent Stephanie Carlin chose not to seek reelection. Candidates, please keep your answers concise so that we can cover as many issues as possible. Our timekeeper, who you've met, will give you cues. Please heed the stop sign so I don't have to cut you off. Concise answers will allow time for more questions. This is not a debate. You will each be given the same amount of time for each question. You now will each have two minutes to summarize your background, qualifications, and your motivation for seeking a seat on the Oshkosh Area School Board. Why should voters choose you over your opponents? We'll go alphabetically, and we'll start with you, Mike.
Well, thank you, Margie, and thanks, everyone, for coming here. Brevity's not always my strength, so I'll try here. My name's Michael Ford. I live in the city of Oshkosh. I've been here 12 years. I live here with my wife of 19 years, Allison. I have two sons in the school district. My son Charlie is a sophomore at Oshkosh North, and John is a seventh grader at Vell Phillips. My day job is the Director of the Wisconsin Institute for Citizenship and Civil Dialogue. In that role, I work across the 13 UW campuses to promote free speech, viewpoint diversity, and civil dialogue. Prior to that, I worked for 11 years as a professor of public administration at UWO, where, among other things, I taught public finance and developed school board governance trainings and use in Wisconsin and all around the country. Even prior to that, I worked for a nonprofit called School Choice Wisconsin, where I helped advance educational opportunities for low-income, mostly minority students in Milwaukee. I have all kinds of community experience, but probably the most relevant is two terms here on the Oshkosh Common Council. So why should you vote for me over others? I think I'm unique as a candidate in a few ways. First and foremost, this is a nonpartisan race, and I'm the only candidate in this race running without the support of a partisan political party. That's really important for me. Second, and perhaps most important, I have a unique background and skill set that's directly relevant to serving on the school board. I have an expertise in education finance, educational policy, school choice, working with educational data, and specifically using school board governance as a way to improve academic outcomes. So I think if we, as a community, are really serious about raising student achievement, being proactive in transparency, reversing our negative open enrollment trends, we need to change the way we're doing things. We need to professionalize our school board. We're at risk of running, you know, falling behind our neighbors. And if we want to get students back into this district and really turn things around, we have to have school board members that are able to hit the ground running. And I really think that I am unique in being able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Molly?
Hi, everybody. My name is Molly Smilnick. I'm the mother of two OASD students and a host mother to an awesome Italian exchange student. I have a long record of being an engaged parent, community partner, and literacy advocate. I served as the president of the Peace Preschool Board, which is a community partner site, as well as the Emmeline Cook Elementary PTO. And I am Mrs. Dr. Eric of Dr. Eric Skate Club. Our program has partnered with OASD for the last 14 or 15 years to build the confidence of thousands of Oshkosh kids while teaching them to skate, and I've tied just about as many skates in the freezing cold. My education advocacy started when my kids did not learn to read in the Oshkosh Area School District. For almost 10 years, along with other concerned parents, I have fought for my kids and all OASD students to have the right to learn to read in our public schools. I testified at the state Capitol, spoke on numerous OASD board meetings, wrote even more strongly worded letters, started Oshkosh Allies in Literacy, and served as a community representative on OASD's literacy community. I was a driving force encouraging the district to implement a high-quality curriculum based in the science of reading, CKLA, which is finally starting just this past fall. I believe deeply in the hard work of equity and dismantling systems where individuals or groups fail to thrive. In a school board setting, this means that I will be holding the administration accountable to eliminate opportunity gaps and disparate academic outcomes, as well as disparities in discipline and exclusion from class. Since being appointed to the Board in summer of 2024, I've visited and volunteered at at least 12 OASD schools for tours, student gallery walks, book reads, and many other things. Because of these interactions with students and staff, I advocated for modifications to proposed referendum questions, including inclusion of error in schools untouched by planned facilities upgrades for the best possible solutions and for the best possible solutions for Oshkosh's youngest students, their families, and staff at the proposed early learning center. I think this summarizes my core beliefs as a board member, which are every child has a right to learn to read in our public schools, every student deserves a learning environment where they feel welcome, safe, and protected, and every family and staff member has a right to have full transparency, responsible fiscal management, and timely responses to frustrations.
Thank you, Molly. Jacob?
Hi. My name's Jacob Wolf. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for holding this forum. I am a proud, blue-collar husband and father of three wonderful kids. Well, two of them are in the OASD. One will join in a couple of years. He's two years old, so he will also be involved in that. I'm also a coach in the community. I coach my son's basketball team through the rec department. I also coach my daughter in Oshkosh Fast League. While my background is not in education, I feel that the skill set that I've acquired through my life and career will provide a fresh perspective and innovative solutions to challenges the OSAD is facing. I work with in fiber optics industry. It's a fast-paced field that demands quick thinking, problem-solving, and practical decision-making. These skills will allow me to approach complex issues with efficiency, logic, adaptability, qualities that I would be very committed to applying in our schools and community. Oshkosh is more than just where I live. It's my home. It's where I met my wife. It's where I'm raising my children and where I actively contribute as a coach for my daughter's teams and my son's team. And through coaching, I get to meet a lot of wonderful families in the OASD, and they voice concerns. I feel like the reason that I would be, the reason that you should vote for me is that I bring a whole new perspective to the school board. Working on common sense solution and problem-solving and being a blue-collar father, I might bring different perspectives that would help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Okay, now, we're going to let Karen take the first question.
And we're going to start with you, Molly. And I always start with a softball question.
Okay.
With changes possibly coming at the Federal Department of Education and State Department of Public Education, what do you see as the priorities for the Oshkosh School District to continue to serve all students, including the marginalized target populations? Just a softball.
Yes. Seriously. I think our number-one priority, obviously, is students first, and within that, our number-one priority must be the education and engagement of our students. We are building a community of excellence in our district. We've started this. It's going to be a long haul. We need to instill the idea and the belief that all students can learn to read, can learn to do math, and can therefore be college, career, and community-ready. And so the highest priority must be not only in investing in core curriculum that is effective, but also in providing teacher training and engagement of students and staff in changing teaching practices and our school and community environment in order to ensure that all kids not only belong, but thrive and have a chance to succeed in the future.
Thank you, Molly. Jacob?
Could you repeat that one more time?
Absolutely. With changes possibly coming at the Federal Department of Education and State Department of Public Education, what do you see as the priorities for the Oshkosh School District to continue to serve all students, including the marginalized target populations?
All right. Well, with the federal mandates, it is law. We have to follow that. But I believe Oshkosh is already doing many things that offer assistance to marginalized. There's been some great things that the current administration has done. I do believe that we need to address all of the gaps in, pardon me, sorry, in achievement and literacy and math, and just make sure that every student has everything necessary to be supported and continue to strive for excellence in the Oshkosh Area School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Michael?
Yeah, my take on this is that this job has just got a heck of a lot more important. People don't know, I mean, the federal government, they fund Title I special needs. So, one, there's a huge amount of fiscal relationship. So I assume, just following what's happening at the federal level, that they're going to transfer those funds to be administered by some other agency if they do eliminate the Department of Education. I hope that happens. If that doesn't happen, we have to be ready to plan for, really, it could be a catastrophic situation. So we have to prepare for that. Federal government also takes the lead on data collection, and that filters down to the states. So we need a school board that has data literacy and is capable of working with data metrics and articulating what our goals are more than ever before, because the feds and the state aren't going to do that anymore. Now, maybe there's opportunity there, because local control, we're going to have a lot more freedom, hopefully, than we had before if these changes do go down. But we've got to be prepared for different scenarios, because there's a lot of uncertainty. We have to be ready.
Thank you, Michael. That's everybody.
It is.
It goes left, right, and right.
There's only three of you. Okay, I'm good. So we'll start with you, Jacob, for this one. Are school vouchers good or bad for public schools and for Oshkosh schools specifically?
The school voucher program, that's a topic that I know is very important to a lot of people in this community. I feel that the voucher program is a good thing. I feel that it gives people opportunity for a choice, and, you know, we look at what is going on with our enrollment that is decreasing, and we need to look at why enrollment's decreasing, why people are leaving the OASD, why people are looking into things like the voucher program, and we need to address those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Yeah, I'm generally a supporter of educational freedom. I think it's important to know that there's different types of voucher programs in the state of Wisconsin. So I know people accusing me of hedging, but that's kind of a, say, voucher program, which one are we talking about? I've always been a strong proponent of the Milwaukee program. Over half the kids in the city of Milwaukee are using a non-MPS option. But here in the Fox Valley, we have strong schools like Lord's and Valley Christian, with, I think, over 800 students in Oshkosh using those schools. You know, I was publicly against the expansion of vouchers statewide, but it's part of our education infrastructure, and I'm not going to stand in the way of any parent making that choice, and I'm sure as heck not going to support ripping 800 kids out of their private schools. And if you know what's going on at Lord's and Valley Christian, they're valuable parts of our community. So whether you're using a choice within the district, you're using open enrollment, using the voucher program, you're still an Oshkosh kid. Now, with that said, enrollment's the lifeblood of a district. We need to make the Oshkosh Area School District as strong as possible, as attractive as possible, so other parents make the same choices that I made for my children. And I think we do that by improving academic outcomes.
Molly?
I'm not a proponent of public funds for voucher schools or, but I do see this very much as a trend. This trend is a strong sign that public education needs to be more responsive to meeting the needs and wants of students and families. I've witnessed this personally with the dyslexia world and kids not learning to read in Oshkosh and people looking for other options. Particularly because of the funding structure, though, where funds are taken from public schools, without a doubt, I see them as a threat today's public education climate. Obviously, independent or individual parents view this as a terrific option for their families, and I don't begrudge them for them. But if we're looking at our overall educational structure and the idea that public education is supposed to be of value of our society and that our goal is to educate all students, we need to make those funds accessible to our public schools. And I also believe that if all schools, if other schools are going to be receiving public funding, they should also be evaluated by the same standards and be expected to meet the same requirements and expectations that public schools are as well, so that we have a much better understanding that kids are learning to read and that we're meeting all of our expectations and making a good investment.
Thank you, Molly. That's it, right? One, two, three?
Yep.
Who'd I start with?
You said we're done?
Yes.
Didn't I start with Jacob?
Yeah.
Okay, so this question is for Michael?
See?
All right, here we go.
Not that easy, is it?
Oh, it's a good thing there's only two of them tonight. The third one might be a disaster. Wisconsin, so it's coming to you, Michael. Wisconsin Act 20, or the Right to Read Act, mandates changes to reading, instruction, and assessment in public schools. Where is Oshkosh in implementing these changes?
Yeah, well, full disclosure, the individual sitting to the left of me is going to blow me out of the water on this, because it's absolutely her passion, so you should listen to her. But certainly, I mean, I think the most relevant thing I can say here is that I support the foundational elements of education. Students don't have literacy skills. They don't have the foundation to learn everything else, and too many of our students don't have, don't have those basic literacy skills. So I certainly support the continued implementation of 2023 Wisconsin Act 20. That has shown a lot of promise. I know there's been some piloting programs here in the Oshkosh Area School District. One of the challenges with that is the state government very unhelpfully, unhelpfully have been fighting over the release of funds for that, and there's nothing we can do about that. So I'm proud of the fact that our district has kind of moved ahead and started implementing these pilot programs, even though that money's not being released. And I think we need to continue to do that, because if we're not doing the best scientifically-based stuff to teach our kids to read, then what the heck are we doing with our school district?
Thank you, Michael. Molly?
Mike is right. I did fight long and hard for the changes that came in Act 20, and I honestly wish it hadn't been done through legislation. I wish it had come without the required governmental intervention. But to the school district's credit, I am so incredibly impressed, and as I mentioned, I was on the committee last spring, that went above and beyond. Basically, we're looking at Act 20 as a minimum and striving to go above and beyond it. We have one, we are implementing one of the four curriculums that was approved unanimously by both the DPI and the Independent Education Committee, and this has allowed us to make significant changes in engagement. I cannot tell you, every year before this year, I was hearing things from parents saying, "My kid isn't learning to read. What do I do? Where can I go get them help?" This year, I'm hearing stories of kids who are in CKLA classrooms who are excited about reading, excited about what they are learning about through reading, and it is a 180-degree turn, and it is an incredible, amazing thing to see that our kids are finally learning to read.
Thank you, Molly. Jacob?
Hi. So, yeah, if we look at literacy, it's extremely important. When we look at the fundamentals of education, you look at reading, writing, STEM, and my daughter loves to read. My son, on the other hand, he struggles a little bit, and he attends helpful programs that are provided by the district to help him along with that, and that's something that's amazing. Act 20 with the CKLA implementation is, we need to focus on that. Like you said, it's the backbone of our education system, and every child has the right and deserves the right to learn how to read and have help in that in every aspect. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob.
Do you want me to take this next one?
Please do.
Okay. Well, okay, so this one comes to you, Molly. Let's see. What is the best way to retain excellent teaching and office staff?
I think it's an important process to go through in order to retain or to recruit and retain our most incredible staff. First is you've got to set expectations, and people need to know what they do, what the framework is where they're successful. That doesn't always just mean that they get good test scores. It means that they have great teaching techniques, they're engaging students. Next, you need to figure out ways that they feel supported in that greatness, that they have the support of their staff, that they have chances to meet with other people who are doing incredible things, and to learn from others and continue as lifelong learners themselves. And finally, I think we need to have a way that we can also figure out ways to reward that success. That's not always going to be monetarily. It's going to be through lots of other techniques where people feel valued, that they have a voice, and that they are part of this system that works for students and works for staff.
Thank you, Molly. Jacob?
So the educators in Oshkosh are amazing, and retaining them is something that is very important. We have had a relatively high turnover rate recently, in the last few years. It's saddening a lot. When I've been out and about, door-knocking, I've met some teachers who are burnt out and tired and need assistance, and I feel like we need to listen to them. They need to be heard. We need to bring them in in every discussion that we have throughout the district so that their voices are part of the decision-making process in what they're going to be teaching, their curriculum, everything. We just need to focus on listening to them and providing what they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Yeah, the role of the school board is to set high-level goals, hold district accountable for meeting those goals. But nothing we do translates into improved educational performance if we don't have the support and buy-in of teachers and staff. We have to keep that in mind. They're the most important employees in the district. Right now, we're in this era of teacher-free agency where teachers are able to move around. As Jacob said, we have a high turnover rate here, but that's not just an Oshkosh thing. That's an everywhere thing. We've got to start thinking, what makes us different? Where is our competitive advantage? For me, as a board member, it's treating teachers like professionals, and I think the most professional thing we can do is set expectations, give them resources, and get out of their way. Treat them like the professionals they are. I'm never here to micromanage. That's one of the complaints you constantly get from teachers, that I just want a place where I can, I can do what I know how to do and be treated with respect while I'm doing it. I also think that it's important for us to be open to ideas like performance pay and things that have been implemented in other districts that some people find attractive. That doesn't work everywhere, but we can't be afraid of exploring these new ideas.
Thank you, Michael. This next question is going to start with you, Jacob. Should the Board of Education play any role in determining which books are selected for school libraries, and what does a balanced approach look like?
I believe that the Board should be in the decision-making process. I look at this in a couple of different ways. First, we need to look at what the book's educational value is. That's very important. If it doesn't provide much of an educational value, then it doesn't necessarily need to be in our libraries. I look at it from a different perspective as well. Most school libraries don't have R-rated films available, and if a teacher wants to show an R-rated educational video in their classroom, not only do they have to have teacher supervision while this is happening, they also need parental consent. So I don't see how that's any different than that type of literature in our libraries. Also, I feel like, or I know that there is a way to deal with it. As far as, right now, the Board makes the policies on, she gave me a stop, sorry.
All right, thank you, Jacob. Michael?
Yeah, so I'm a staunch believer in the freedom of speech and freedom of expression, and I always prefer parents and not a governing body be trusted to regulate their own children's reading material. I think the elephant in the room in these discussions, that this is another one of those national culture issues where we so often talk past one another. You know, I say book banning, you say age-appropriate. I mean, we can have some common sense prevail here. So if I'm elected, I will, of course, adhere to the district policies for public complaints about material. But this really gets back to the last question, where I think we can be comfortable, and I can certainly be comfortable, trusting professional staff to make decisions about what is age-appropriate, and then have enough respect for OASD parents and stakeholders that when they want to follow up with district policy, with complaints that come to the Board, we can navigate that process, just like the district did last year. We can either make a big deal out of this, or this is something where we can use the existing channels we have, trust our professionals, and just navigate past it so we can focus on what really matters, which is improving student outcomes.
Thank you, Michael. Molly?
I'm far more concerned with kids actually being able to read the books in the library than with limiting the books that are available for them to read. I think that there is a robust policy in place where there is a policy where, and procedure for parents to express that they, parents and other community stakeholders to express that there may be what they consider to be an inappropriate book in a school library or in a school curriculum. It is the Board's role to make sure that that policy is followed and to trust, though, the professionalism of that, assuming that that policy is followed, that those are the people who, not the Board, but our actual administrators, it is them who determine if it is age-appropriate and the subject appropriate, educationally appropriate as well. The role of the Board is to make sure that the procedures are followed. The expertise in determining age-appropriate falls with our actual educators, and then the role of the parents is to say, "This is inappropriate for my own child." They don't have the right to do that for anyone else's child.
Thank you, Molly. Okay, excuse me, this question is going to go to you, Mike, first. This is very much a League of Women Voter question, I believe.
All right.
How will you ensure our students have the knowledge and skills to be strong democratic citizens and effective leaders, and how will this nurture their sense of responsibility to actively participate in our democracy?
I'm going to take a new job as the Director of the Wisconsin Institute for Citizenship and Civil Dialogue. No, I wake up in the morning, and this is what I do, and this is what I, this is what I think of. You know, people ask me about my core values, and if you go on my Facebook page, you see they get upset when I don't give simple answers. But it's not simple. I believe in democracy. I believe that we have to articulate a space for every single person in our community to be part of the public discussion. And to build a pipeline of future citizens that can take place in a pluralistic society, we have to start at the K-12 level. We have to have them prepared when they get to college. That has to continue through college. If they go to tech school, they go straight into the career force, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. Everyone owns that one share in our democracy, and they need to be able to flex that muscle and share equally in the benefits and the negatives that come with that. So I'm passionate about that. And yes, I know that we talk so much about literacy. That's a foundational thing, but so is civics. If we're not creating citizens capable of navigating our democracy, once again, what are we doing?
Thank you. Molly?
I mean, obviously, though much of our students' learning happens in a classroom, our world is our students' classroom, and it's the responsibility of those adults that are helping those kids learn to make sure that that world is opened up to them and to allow them to have, to learn how to debate, learn how to be engaged in their community, to learn from their community. And I think that the best learning happens when we, is when we do engage in that kind of discussion and discourse in the public school setting. I also think that it's important that we are talking about the fact that Oshkosh Area School District needs to create this school environment of excellence and the idea of engagement and rigor in all aspects of our classrooms. That's how kids learn how to debate. That's how kids learn about different parts of our community. That's how they learn how to weld, how to become the next, well, the next, who knows, emerging STEM technology, and that's how they learn to be engaged citizens. And once they learn it first in school, it translates to when they're great adults.
Thank you. Jacob?
I mean, ultimately, when we look at this, the whole goal of the school system is to prepare our students for their futures, to be successful adults when they get out of the school system, and we need them to understand the importance of the democracy and how everybody has equal opportunities, and that we need to keep focusing on those opportunities, and that we need to keep focusing on those opportunities for each and every individual. So it is something that is very important to be stressed in our school systems.
Thank you. I think that's all three.
All right. So this question comes to you, Molly. Do you support the referendum that will be on the ballot on Election Day? And if it passes, what levers will that give OASD to improve educational outcomes for students?
I do support the referendum that is on the ballot for April 1st, and I do this because I think that there's a very valid reason for consolidation and that the actual goal in all of it is educational outcomes, is making sure that the staff that is available to students is available in the same classroom with them. And I've learned this a lot in working with our early childhood team and talking with at least 13 to 15 of them this fall about what it would mean for them to have a centralized place where they could all be supporting all 600 of our four-year-olds all at once and having opportunities to serve their needs. The same thing happens, though, when, if we do not have places right now where they don't have air conditioning, or we can't open the windows, or where kids can't, at South Park, where it's almost impossible for kids who are in a wheelchair to get from class to class or without going down a long hallway. We have to make education accessible to kids. There are times when our facilities can make it harder to learn, and we're in that situation in many of our settings right now.
Thank you, Molly. Jacob?
Currently, I am against the referendum, not because I don't care about our kids and not, and I completely understand that our schools are in need of repairs, our schools are in need of updates. There are many things in the referendum that I like, but the way that this one was handled, I think we just need to revisit it and come up with a new plan and a new solution. I feel like with the zoning issues that we had with South Park and quickly shifting to a new location, and then there wasn't much transparency at the beginning, and now there's the Q and A's and there's more transparency involved, but I really think that we need to just go back, look through this, look into certain aspects, like I understand North needs a new auditorium, and ADA accessibility is incredibly important, and we need to focus on that, but I just think this needs a revisit.
Thank you, Jacob. Michael?
Yes, I do, and I'll start with some facts. This isn't free. It costs almost $200 million. I think that's important. If this does pass, the debt levy will remain constant because we're paying off old debt. If this does not pass, the debt levy will go down, and the school board will keep setting the operations levy, just like it always does. I want to lay that out because there's been so much confusion in the community, so let's start with some plain speak. For me, it's worth foregoing the immediate tax cut to improve our facilities. Buildings absolutely do not teach kids, but it's a foundational element. If kids aren't in a safe spot, they don't have good indoor air quality, they're in a place where the windows are bolted shut, that's not helpful. Being competitive for families and teachers requires safe buildings, achieving economies of scale, and not forcing teachers to have to navigate through buildings all day. If we want to attract people back to the district, if we want to attract the best talent, teachers, most talented teachers, excuse me, we need to have competitive facilities. I can't go back in time and undo the mistakes around the acquisition of properties around South Park. I can't undo the deferred maintenance, but at the very least, I can commit to make a good store of these funds if this does pass. And if it doesn't, we have to triage what we can do. Thank you. Sorry, Fran.
We've got you scared of that timekeeper now.
She's the nicest looking person ever. We don't want to make her mad.
Okay. New question. This will go to you first, Jacob. Should the Ten Commandments be posted in our schools' classrooms?
Yes, I believe they should. It's not only important to have all historical events available, and this is something that we were founded on. Our country is founded on religion, and I feel that it's important to have that in our classrooms. There are so many other things that are allowed in our classrooms, and I feel like it's a strong foundation for our kids to grow up on. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Can we clarify? Is the question, and is it meant to be like in a teaching material, or?
Should the Ten Commandments be posted in our schools' classrooms?
Oh, I guess that's a legal question. I'm not a lawyer. Molly is, she can answer that. But from a purely separation of church and state thing, I don't think that we want to have religious laws posted in our classroom in case students don't subscribe to that religion. Right, I'm a Christian, and that's great, but that doesn't mean all of my students' friends at their public schools are Christians and want to be exposed to that, so I, yeah, that's a no.
Okay, thank you. Molly?
I can unequivocally say, not because I'm a lawyer, but because it's simply my strong belief that no, the Ten Commandments should not be posted in our public schools. Our country was founded on a separation of church and state, and yes, religion is very important, and it is very important to many people and how they live their lives. It is just as important to my Muslim clients as it is to the Christian students that are in our classrooms, and in no way is it, I, sorry, in no way, nothing. What I believe in is that we have a duty as a school board to create a setting where all students feel safe, welcome, and that belong. Putting religious icons or religious beliefs in the public school setting does not foster that. It fosters a belief of separation, of one being better than the other. It does not foster a sense of belonging, and in our diverse community, where I value the very many different members of our community that we have here in Oshkosh, in no way should we be promoting one religion in our public schools.
Thank you.
This question comes to you, Michael. What do you see as the most important strengths of the district and what programs or policies need improvement?
Well, strengths of the district, I'm horribly biased, but the arts is just absolutely incredible in this district. I'm in awe of it. My own son, when he was a little kid, we would take him to plays, and now he's in the plays, and it's just an incredible thing. Like I said, my other son goes to Val Phillips, and to see the diversity of that school and be able to go to a place that's going to mirror the world he faces is a pretty incredible thing, and I know there's been ups and downs there, and it gets a lot of community talk, but I can tell you, as a parent, from day one, my students thrive there, and yeah, it's definitely, I'm rambling a little bit, but so much I've been impressed with on this district. In terms of things that need to be improved, is we have unacceptably high racial and socioeconomic achievement gaps. To me, that's the big one. It all comes back to how do we improve student outcomes? That's the one thing that unites everything we should be doing as a school board, and if a district is not working for our minority students, our low-income students, it's a district that's not working. That's where we need to put our focus.
Thank you, Michael. Molly?
I think the strengths of our district are in the small things, and this will come into a theme in both aspects of me answering this question. I constantly encourage our district to tell their story, because when you talk to a kid in a classroom or talk to a parent, they'll tell you amazing stories about anyone that they are meeting with on a daily basis. It's when we get to the bigger pictures that we struggle, and it's in the academic achievement where we are struggling. We do have some thriving school communities, and I think what we, where we are kind of lacking right now, though, is in that sense of a school community that believes in itself and believes in our students, where we think that we can achieve a lot, where we think that every student in these classrooms has the, can read, should be able to read, deserves to be able to achieve in their classrooms, and deserves to be able to belong and feel trusted and respected in those classrooms. And I think that teachers sometimes feel that they don't necessarily get that same respect either. So I think we need to work on our communication, both with stakeholders in and out of the schools, and on making sure that we build on those small successes.
Thank you, Molly. Jacob?
Could you repeat it one more time?
Sure. What do you see as the most important strengths of the district and what programs or policies need improvement?
I think the district is doing an absolutely great job on extracurriculars. I know my kids have been part of many, many activities that the OASD offers, and that's fantastic, and we need to just keep working on that. I think as they address our academic achievement and our gaps, our struggle right now, and I want to see Oshkosh students succeed. I want our math and literacy scores to improve, and I feel like we need to focus on those fundamentals improving.
Thank you, Jacob. This question goes to...
I think it's Molly.
I guess it's me.
Molly?
I think so, because he was last, so, yeah.
Good, that's what I had written down, right?
Yeah.
Sure. Okay, this was a submitted question, and I will put a caveat on this. Based on the knowledge that we had when we walked in here tonight, this is probably already in the works, President Trump has said that he wants the Secretary of the Department of Education to close the department and return full control of public education back to each individual state. Do we need, this is a three-parter. Do we need a federal Department of Education? Should each state have full control of the education and services they provide to their students? And how will the Oshkosh Area School District deal with the possibility of the loss of federal funds to our district?
Okay, just a second. And I'm first, right?
You are.
I, as Mike alluded to earlier, I strongly believe that we do indeed need a federal Department of Education, and particularly, we need that funding that is given through the federal Department of Education. Much of what the feds fund are the core things and are, that serve our most, are either our core things that are in our district, such as school lunches, or also things like our Section 1 schools or our special ed students, that kind of work. We need to have a way to fund that, and if it's going to be completely through the states, if the feds are going to be eliminated, that funding still is needed, and because that support is needed 100%. And how will the OASD deal with this is we have to. There's no option. If it comes down to that, I think there will need to be some entrepreneurial spirit, but I believe strongly in the need for education and the need for funding for education, especially those most in need of support, and that's what our federal Department of Education does.
Thank you. Jacob?
Federal funding is important. You know, there are so many things that our students are facing that, like she stated with the meal plans and the funding of our ADA accessible buildings and just everything that the Fed funds is important to keeping our schools updated and keeping the information accurate, and I don't have a ton of background on this, but I am willing to learn, and thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, that's such a complicated question. I mean, it can go historically, right? Before the Carter administration, there wasn't a federal Department of Education, so we could function without one. The question is, what's going to happen to the funding and the services provided? If there's a thoughtful plan to transfer that funding to another agency or to the states, you know, some sort of transition period, okay, I suppose it's theoretically possible. I'm not, don't have a lot of confidence, from what I'm seeing, that that's what's happening. Is the state prepared to do this? I've had a lot of great experience working with the Department of Public Instruction. There's some incredibly talented people there. I don't think they have the capacity to step in in day one and have any idea of what to do, even if they were given this pot of money, because this takes process, procedure, due process, especially when you're dealing with things like funding special education, funding title schools. This is complicated stuff, and we lose, we lose the ability to do this in a thoughtful manner if we rush things. But from a local standpoint, we don't have a vote in this matter. We've got to be prepared, and that includes, I call it disaster planning, but it's true. If we were to lose our title funding and our special needs funding, we have to have a budget that is the absolute worst-case scenario that we're ready to go with. It's going to be ugly, but we need to respect our stakeholders and our citizens and be honest about that. Have a plan.
Thank you.
All right. And this is the last question, and we're going to start with you, Jacob. The school district, the county, and the city of Oshkosh are all separate and distinct government entities that we pay property taxes to. How could the three work more closely together to ensure better outcomes for students of OASD?
Could you repeat it one more time, please?
Sure. The school district, the county, and the city of Oshkosh are all separate and distinct government entities. How could the three work more closely together to ensure better outcomes for students in AOSD?
Okay. So there are a lot of programs, like I mentioned before, that are offered through our taxpayer dollars. There are also a lot of nonprofit programs that are available to our students. I feel like we have to spend our time focusing on anything that we can provide for our students' success. And, thank you.
That's okay.
You're good.
That's all right. Thank you, Jacob.
Didn't give Mike enough time to write, though.
Oh, I'm next?
You're next, Michael.
I'm always mindlessly taking notes. They don't mean anything. No, that's a great question, because, right, the problems facing students in OASD go far beyond, I shouldn't say problems, the challenges, the opportunities, all of the above, go far beyond what just occurs during the school day or occurs in OASD. The future success of the Oshkosh region and our students and our community, the first future prosperity, requires all of our institutional partners. So I'd go beyond the city and the county and the school district. I'd include UWO, I'd include the nonprofit sector, I'd include the for-profit sector. I've become a big proponent of collective impact initiatives where we set common metrics, where we can integrate parts of the strategic plans of all of these organizations and have some type of central body that's steering this ship and holding members accountable for actually creating some of this community progress. It's no guarantee we're going to get there, but at the very least, we get past this blame game, where we're all using each other as a way to say, well, yeah, you know, the tax levy's high because of that entity or that entity. No, we've got to integrate, and we can do it. Other places have done it. There are models out there. We need to start thinking a little more creatively, because when you get your tax bill, do you really care who the taxing entity is? No, you care about what you're paying. When you look at the future of Oshkosh, do you care that the kid was failed by OASD or by some other problem? No. You want the kid to be successful.
Thank you, Michael. Molly?
I went on a rant on this at a board meeting, and that happened to be around the time that we all found out about the South Park zoning issues, because it was an absolute failure of community partnerships of county, state, county, city, and OASD did not work together, did not think to say to themselves collaboratively, or have consistent meetings where they did more than pat each other on the back to figure out how to collaborate and move forward to come to good solutions with people, or to share important information with each other. I hope that was an eye-opening experience for everyone to say, hey, let's actually communicate proactively and have good relationships. It's not about blaming each other. It's about coming together to make a great solution for our community and to supporting our kids. And I would also echo Mike's idea of not only working with UWO, but our business community as well, to come up with ways to have innovative learning opportunities for kids. That's immediately for students to succeed. We can do so much more in our community if we work collaboratively on different partnerships and learning opportunities for kids, and then also have great communication to better support taxpayers in our community.
Thank you, Molly. Okay. Now we're going to switch to our additional statement, that you can each have one minute to say whatever you'd like, and we'll start with you, Jacob.
I have had the opportunity of meeting a bunch of wonderful families in the OASD. It's been a pleasure, and I hope I continue to gain your support, and I will work hard to work with the current board to come up with new and creative ideas that will help better our children's futures, and I will strive to learn everything that I need to be a strong member of the board, and I appreciate all of your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Molly?
I'm going to beat the literacy drum once more. Teaching kids to read is a key to all of this. There's a quote from a literacy advocate that says, "How do you reduce suspensions? We taught kids to read." "How did you improve attendance? We taught kids to read." "How did you reduce teacher turnover? We taught kids to read." So the answers aren't simple, but they're not easy, and I have no doubt that kids are up to a challenge, but I think it's us adults that are struggling with this, and so I will, that is my priority, because I really think that is the key to so many things succeeding in our school. And I also want to speak about the fact that as a school member and a board member, I will always try to act with integrity and to be open and honest and truthful in my views, and I will strive to be responsive to those to come with me, to comments, concerns, and for help, whether they're constituents or those I serve in my personal life. I hold myself accountable to a higher standard than I hold anybody else, and I will always try to act in a way that I am proud of myself, and I hope that others will be proud of me too, or at least respect me, and that I can at least earn your vote to serve on the board again.
Thank you, Molly. Molly? Thank you, Molly. Michael?
Well, thank you. Thanks, everyone, for listening, for the questions, and thank you to my opponents here. No doubt, we have three candidates who care deeply about this school district and this community, which is great. Voters obviously have a choice to make. I've talked a little bit tonight, I wish I could have talked more, about the need to professionalize our school board practices. That's a tool. That's a way to improve student outcomes. It's something I've worked on with school board members across the country, and I do it because the impact is real. There's so much we can't control, things that are coming from the state and the federal government. We've got questions about that tonight. But something we can control is how we interact with one another as a governance group. A focused, professional board can set clear, measurable goals that are consistent with the values of the community. That means we've got to get out there. We've got to listen. I used to say it's like going for walks, but I've been to over 5,000 houses, and I like to get out there and listen to people on their turf, understand what those values are, even when they don't agree with mine, because that's okay. There's a lot I don't know. I don't trust anyone that agrees with everything I say. But we have to be able to communicate our goals and have measurables and communicate it to the superintendent, so that we can communicate what we are expecting of our school district to the public. That allows us to hold the superintendent accountable. It allows the public to hold us accountable. So a vote for me on April 1st is a vote for that transparency, accountability, empowering our teachers and our parents, and then just some basics of ability that I really hope that we can restore to this Board. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. This concludes the forum for Oshkosh Area School Board. On Tuesday, April 1st, you may vote for two of these candidates. The polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Everyone must show a photo ID. You must register when, you may register when you go to vote on Election Day. If you need to do that, take a proof of residence with you. Early and absentee voting allows voters who cannot reach their polling place on Election Day to vote beforehand. Check with your city or town clerk for early voting availability. Go to myvote.wi.gov to find information on registration, ballot, acceptable photo IDs, and polling places. Go to vot411.org to learn more about these candidates. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Winnebago County, I want to thank you for participating in this forum. And remember, our democracy depends on citizen involvement, and voting has consequences. Please vote on April 1st.